Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. My name is Rob Bamber and I serve as Chair of the Board. The Forum is present and the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearings will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the Board. The Board members may then ask questions of the applicant. Once the Board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearings to the public for comment. All members of the public in attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair and I will call upon Board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. The Board will then move into a period of deliberation where it will determine whether or not it closes the public hearing and moves to a vote, or continues the public hearing to a later date. A few quick reminders before we begin. We request that participants in this evening's meeting remain respectful to attendees, Board members, applicants, and staff. Please be concise in your comments and presentations to ensure that sufficient time is available for others to comment and for the Board to deliberate. Please turn your phones to silent and refrain from side conversations so that all participants in the meeting can hear. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is Special Permit and Site Plan Review, 259 Lenox Street. Can the clerk please read the notice into the record?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Public Hearing Notice, Norwood Planning Board. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Board of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on August 26, 2024 at 7:00 p.m., 7 o'clock p.m. at the request of David Hearn Jr., Esquire, representing VPG 259 Lenox LLC regarding property located at 259 Lenox Street, which is located at Map 6, Block 5A, lots 5 and 11, Norwood, Massachusetts, 02062, and the manufacturing zoning district M and MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, Norwood Central, MCMOD-NC. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass, 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet, which is HTTPS backslash meet dot google dot com backslash MHUIVFSNJZ. And there's a phone call in. This application requests a special permit pursuant to Section 9.5.6b and with the bonuses, Stormwater and Heat Island bonus of the Norwood zoning bylaw for one story of additional building height in exchange for enhanced storage and treatment of stormwater runoff and heat mitigation. The Board will also conduct site plan review pursuant to Section 10.5 for redevelopment of the property for multifamily housing with associated landscaping and parking area improvements. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the Board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and to make their views known to the Board. Plans are in file with this application in the Office of the Planning Board and may be requested by emailing COMDEV@norwoodMA.gov or by calling 781-762-1240, extension 6055, any Monday or Friday from 8 to 4.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, Ms. Attorney Hearn?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. David Hearn Jr. of Kellerman and Cabral. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I also, if you don't mind, want to introduce my colleague Rory Byrne, who joined our firm recently and expressed an interest in coming along this evening. You may see more of him in future meetings and I hope you'll be as courteous and patient with him as you've always been with me. So, I'm not going to ask him to speak tonight. I wouldn't put him through that yet. But, anyway, this project before you involves 259 Lenox Street, which is known by many as the Savagrande site. It is an industrial site of about 2.7 acres on Lenox Street. It is bounded on the west by the MBTA track running between here and Franklin, and it is bounded to the north by the MBTA Norwood Central parking lot, on the east by, generally by Lenox Street, and to the south by other industrial buildings. What is proposed is a multifamily project of 145 residential units, and we will be able to explain for you how that fits on the site, all the amenities that will be offered, the layout of the units, and so forth. This project is the first project to come before you under the new provisions of our zoning bylaw that were passed last, this past March, Section 9.5, which created several, a general district and three sub-districts in which multifamily housing is allowed as a matter of right, subject to certain constraints or requirements. We have a very experienced and capable team that's been working on this for a long time, and I want to note the, I'll say, the leader of the gang tonight, Jacob Vance, who will be speaking to you in a few minutes, but we also have the architectural firm of Embark with us, the engineering firm of Allen Major, and our landscape architectural firm, MDLA, and others to support the project. The site, as I said, is about 2.7 acres. We propose 145 apartment units. We propose 169 parking spaces, 33 bicycle storage spaces. This project will comply with all of the Commonwealth Stormwater Handbook requirements, as well as the local regulations regarding drainage. And we think it will be certainly an improvement environmentally and use-wise for this particular site. This has been used as a manufacturing or industrial site for a long time. Savagrande makes various chemical products for commercial and household use, but there is a need now, as many of you know, for more housing in the greater Boston area, and this is an opportunity to approve that type of project. It is, it is a project that is allowed as a matter of right under Section 9.5. We are asking for some relief with respect to the requirements set forth in Section 9.5. We're asking for relief to allow a dense, a special permit to allow a density bonus that would allow a fifth floor on the building. Normally, the requirements or limitations are four stories, or 44 feet, but the bylaw provides, at Section 9.5.G.6, that upon satisfaction of certain conditions, the Board, confirmation of those, the Board can grant the special permit for the density bonus. We comply with the stormwater requirements and the local regulations regarding drainage. That's part one. Part two, there are some options. We are, we propose to install a roof that will be 70, at least 75% constructative, highly reflective material, which is considered to be environmentally appropriate. So, those two prongs satisfy the requirements for the density bonus. We're looking for waivers with respect to three matters. One has to do with the length of the parking spaces. Instead of 18 and a half feet, which is a normal requirement, we're asking for 18 feet, which is actually quite common in many developments in the greater Boston area. That extra space gives us more room for more green on the site in terms of trees and shrubs. We're asking for relief with respect to the number of parking spaces. The bylaw sets a minimum and maximum of 1.1 spaces per unit. Now, over the years, we've had many discussions, you and I, about number of parking spaces, and most of the time, we're coming in asking for a reduction in the number of parking spaces that are normally required for a particular project based upon the bylaw. This bylaw, Section 9.5, limits, says there's a minimum and there's a maximum, and it happens to be the same number. We're proposing, in this case, that maximum would be 160 parking spaces for the 145 units. We're proposing 169 based upon our clients' experience and anticipated uses of the site to allow spaces for visitors, vendors, staff, and other people that might have to come onto the site over and above the residents. So, we're asking for 169 spaces instead of 160, which is allowed. And finally, we're asking for relief. This is a matter that was raised at a meeting very recently with the Building Commissioner and other department heads, having to do with parking within the building setback. We propose several spaces in front of the building, and to use those, the Building Commissioner raised an issue about whether that violated the setback requirement and suggested that we ask the Board for relief. This site is a little bit unusual in that part of it, plus an existing parking lot that is on Lenox Street where it serves a nearby apartment building. So, we're not touching Lenox Street. We're well back from Lenox Street, but technically, to our boundary, we are requiring, we believe we require some relief on that. So, those are the four points that we're looking for waivers or relief on, the density bonus, the depth of the parking stalls, the parking spaces, the location, a setback from the property boundary, and the number of parking spaces. We think this is a good project, and I'd like to introduce Jacob Vance now to make a couple of comments, and many of you know him. He's been working on this over the last couple of years and spending a lot of time in the town, but he'll take over from here and then we'll probably hear from some of our design professionals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your time tonight. Just wanted to say how excited we are to come back here. You know, as we all know, it's been two years now, and I think the project has gone through a few iterations that have really improved things, and most recently, we had the pleasure of meeting with Sarah and a bunch of the department heads at a meeting subsequent to the filing, and they had a bunch of comments that we have incorporated into the plans that you see here this evening. So, just excited to be here. I'll keep it brief. We're going to try to keep this presentation to, you know, 10, 12 minutes. One other thing that Mr. Hearn didn't mention was the drive aisle width is also a, more of a technical waiver that we are looking for. I believe the current plans have 24 feet, and I think the bylaw, I think it depends on the size of the space that you're planning, but I think it's 26 feet, I believe, is the bylaw. So, I just wanted to add that just as a technical matter, but I'll pass it off now to Tim at Embark, and then we're going to have the landscape speak, and then the civil speak, but again, total duration here, talking like a dozen minutes or so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob and David. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Tim Maranger with Embark, architect on the project. So, if you can turn our attention to the screen here, if you can go forward just a few slides to the, kind of, the context map, we'll put some kind of visuals to David's kind of contextual explanation of the site. So, we are in the Norwood Central sub-district of the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay. So, we're basically, the district itself is kind of the darker tone in the map here, so we're essentially right in the center of it with the MBTA lot just to our north, more industrial sites to our south, and across the tracks. As Ed mentioned, we have the tracks immediately butting us to the west, and then the residential zoning district and neighborhood just across Lenox Street to our east. We think the kind of, the positioning of the site right in between the MBTA station and the kind of more residential neighborhood and the amenities that offers, such as Pleasant Park, makes a perfect kind of location for a multifamily residential, both in terms of amenities and access to transit for the residents, and just as a way to transition from that industrial business use into the other, less dense residential. On the left of the screen here, there's a few, just existing photos of the site. So, the existing drive aisle to the existing parking lot, curb cut to enter the site, kind of aligns with Lenox Ave. So, we'll be maintaining that for entry to our site in the new plan. We think that's a nice coordination point. And then, the center photo there, you see where that single tree in the parking is, there's a, as noted, a row of parking perpendicular to the street along the front, which we won't be touching. That's outside of our property boundary, but there is, there's a lack of vegetation and buffer there that will be enhancing to soften the site and add a bit of a visual barrier there between, between the building and the street. If you can go to the next slide. This adjusts an existing conditions. Yeah, so this is the existing conditions, the existing building outlined in white, and the existing pavement is the gray tone. So, most of the site currently is occupied by asphalt or building. It runs right up to the edge of the property line in the west, and at the rear, the abutting building to the south is only a few feet off the property line. That picture there in the bottom corner shows the existing condition where there's a few weeds and basically just building in asphalt. So, that's something we're going to be softening up as well, that we can go over when we get to the landscape, but we think overall, we want to add more landscaping to the site around the perimeter to kind of soften up a little bit. So, here is our site plan. If you see the two dashed red lines there at the east of the site off Lenox Street, the first one of those is the 20-foot setback that's required. The second one is the 40-foot setback. So, the 40-feet setback is required above 33 feet, or three floors. In order to not step the building back 20 feet like that and create a nicer amassing, we decided to push the whole building back to that 40-foot line. So, we have a 40-foot setback in the front, and that gave us the space to wrap the parking all the way around the front and to have those three loading spaces directly adjacent to the lobby. As I said, we're utilizing the existing curb cut for entry and exit of the site, and we have a double-loaded parking aisle that wraps around the full perimeter of the site, giving fire access to the full, all sides of the building. In the top-left corner, you see, there's a dedicated fire lane that we've coordinated with the fire department that is visible from the site entry, and immediately adjacent to that is our sprinkler room. And then around the corner, you'll see a second dedicated loading zone, both for resident move-in, move-out, as well as trash pickup. The adjacent kind of dark gray room there just inside the building is our trash room, and adjacent to that is our rear entry. So, that provides easy access for trash pickup and resident move-in, move-out while not being visible from the street. We do have a few tandem spaces that are just south to the pool there at the bottom of the site. The building itself is generally in L shape, with that front bar kind of bends down a little bit. We can show in the renderings and elevations how that reduces the scale of the building visually, and we have separate materials treatment on those two masses to kind of further break that down. You enter the site from the front lobby there, the top right corner, we have a double-height lobby space, a fairly grand entrance. The lines with that red tone is our common amenity space for building residents, which has its own double-height space, and that spills out into our shared amenity courtyard and pool area that's protected on three sides by the building itself and is self-facing tougher, so excellent exposure. If you go to the next slide. So, here's our second-floor plan. Again, we have those double-height spaces, slightly more amenity space on the, on the second floor here. That looks into that as a bit of mezzanine, a combination of junior one-bed, one-bed, and two-bed units throughout. If you go to the next slide, is our, this is our typical third, fourth, and fifth-floor plan. So, overall, we have 145 units. 15 of those, or 10%, are the junior one-beds and an average square footage of 636 square feet. 94 of them, or 65%, are one-beds at an average of 735 square feet, and 36 of them, or 25%, are two-beds at an average of 1125 square feet. So, the darkest tones on these are the two beds, and they're generally located at the building corners with the one-beds and junior one-beds in between. More than half of our units have either a private balcony or a private patio space as well, which is, are the kind of tan tones that hang off the building here. If you go to the next slide. Here's just a rendering from the site entrance off of Lenox Street. So, we've, Nick can get into this, our civil engineer will get into this more on the civil plans, but we've extended the curb from our site, from our lobby. We have a crosswalk that crosses the drive aisle, and we've extended the curb along Lenox Street where there isn't currently a sidewalk. There's just, there's kind of an informal dirt path. We've extended the sidewalk out to where the existing crosswalk is at Lenox Street. We've also added additional landscape trees along the front there of the site behind that parking to soften and buffer that. If you go to the next slide. So, here's a little bit closer view. So, that double-height space in the corner is our lobby entry, kind of a grand entry, and then along the bottom, we have fairly open, transparent, where we have common spaces. The bike entry to the bike storage room would be right there. We have the 33 spaces required with direct access from the front of the site. If you can go to the next slide. So, here's just a rendering from more of the rear, looking into the courtyard area. That two-story volume to the right there is our amenity jewel box, we're calling it. It's very glassy, open, brings a lot of light to that common space, and spills out to create this indoor-outdoor amenity area with the courtyard. And then you can see in this view how we have a different material treatment from that front volume and the rear volume. If you go to the next slide. So, here is the north elevation facing the MBTA lot, so it's a combination of a darker fibrousment and then a lighter fibrousment and metal pan on the base. We have raised the datum of that base material where it transitions to raise the proportionally, it breaks down that, that bottom story, sort of kind of reduces the visual height of the building. And then everywhere we have, we turn a corner and amassing or introduce balconies, we have that wood-toned accent material. And then here is the south elevation and then the front elevation. You'll see, modeled in these elevations, we have all the rooftop equipment. So, if you look at the roof plan on the next sheet here, all of the individual unit, units, the heap-hem units are aligned along the central axis here on the roof plan over the corridor, and we have a couple larger ventilation units that are positioned in order to not be able to see them from the kind of key vantage points from around the building. We also have, after speaking with the building inspector and the fire department, we have added a emergency generator on the roof that will serve all life safety elements of the building in case of a power outage. So, the fire alarm system, the elevator recall, and emergency lighting. So, one thing I'd mention, so at the front of the site here on those, kind of the northwest and the west, the northeast and eastmost walls, we do have a small parapet for the building that pitches upward, and that hides the stair tower, the elevator overrun, and the emergency generator front view from the street.
Is that shown in any of the...
That's in the renderings, yeah. You go to the next one, but. So, these, you can see a little bit there in that middle one, how the geometry of that kind of, that amassing pitches up a little bit to that front point. It kind of announces that as the entry in front of the building as well, in addition to having a practical aspect of hiding equipment. So, these three views are, the main vantage points are taken further back. We re-rendered these since our last meeting with the town when the question of the visibility of rooftop equipment was raised. So, we pulled these back from where we were showing the previous renderings. So, this top one here is from the MBTA lot looking south, and this is several hundred feet from the building. So, any further than this, even from this vantage, they're far enough from the edge of the roof that they won't be visible. And then this is the view, the kind of main view from Lenox Ave looking west toward the building, where we have that parapet, so that would screen all that equipment. And then the view on the bottom here is looking north up Lenox Street, where again, they're set far enough back from the, from the edge of the building where you won't have any visibility. So, with that, I can turn it over to Mike D'Angelo, who can speak to the landscaping.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Mike D'Angelo, my firm's MDLA, I'm the landscape architect. So, just starting at the, the front of the site as you enter, you know, to really make this feel a lot, you know, a lot more green and inviting, we have, all along the street, we have new trees at roughly 20 feet on center. Along the building facade, you'll notice specialty paving, so those are permeable pavers of a, you know, a higher quality. So, starting at the accessible parking spaces and wrapping around to the lobby, those are all pavers. There's a small entry sign that you might have seen in the 3D rendering previously, right there with the mouses, you know, just saying the building name with some plantings around it. As we work our way around the building, this, this project is a really nice exterior amenity package. We have a swimming pool, an area for residents to, you know, get some shade and use some grills. All of the, the browner areas you see are all permeable pavers to help with stormwater management. Even adjacent to the pool, where we could, we have some permeable decking on the, on the, that would be the, the left side of the pool. In regards to landscaping itself and planting, all the plants are drought tolerant, native. Around the parking areas especially, we're very cognizant of just planting things that are salt tolerant, you know, snow compaction tolerant, that could really take a beating. In terms of numbers, the minimum required trees is 76. We have 114. Minimum required shrubs for this project is 230. We're at almost 400. We have over 1,000 perennials on this plan. If you scroll down a little bit, you could see, even in the areas against the building along the adjacent property, we're getting in some columnar trees to provide some green, you know, green backdrop there. Along the left side of the plan, you'll see we have shade trees at roughly 20 feet on center with understory plantings that are, again, all drought tolerant and native. And then the, the following documents are just more of the technical planting plans. One thing I did not mention, we also have a small dog relief area to the north by the Transformers. So, that's not a, that's not a dog park, that's just a, a small area that's designated for residents to bring their dogs. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, Nick Delacava, professional engineer with Allen Major Associates for the site civils for the project. If we can go to the next slide. I know we've talked about the site plan in depth at this point, so I'll be fairly brief. Again, at the northeast corner, we're maintaining the existing curb cut on the site. It'll provide access in and out. We have 24-foot wide driveways surrounding the building for two-way circulation, and the site requires 160 parking spaces. We are proposing 169. 148 of those will be standard eight-and-a-half-by-18 spaces. We have six accessible eight-and-a-half-by-18 spaces. Four of those are located near the main entrance, and two additional at the southwest corner of the building. We have three parallel eight-by-22 visitor spaces. Those are, yep, right east of the main entrance, and then 12 tandem eight-and-a-half-by-18 spaces near the pool courtyard. As Tim mentioned, we also have 33 bicycle parking spaces located inside the building. We provided an accessible route around the whole site. There is a, either five-foot wide or six-foot wide sidewalk that surrounds the building. We have access through a crosswalk at the northeast corner that connects to the right-of-way, and like Tim mentioned, we are proposing a new sidewalk there that connects to the corner of the MBTA driveway. Site lighting will be provided around the perimeter of the parking. We have 14 pole-mounted fixtures and some additional building-mounted fixtures. 12-foot mounting heights have been maintained at the front of the site. We have 20-foot max mounting heights around the side and rear of the building. All fixtures will be dark sky compliant. Right now, we're holding the beacon ratio model, and then we've maintained the zoning requirement for less than three-foot candles of light overspill at all property lines. Snow storage will be handled in the landscaped islands away from fire hydrants, as Mike mentioned. We are planting those areas accordingly. Any snow that doesn't fit in those islands during like large storm events or consecutive storm events, we are prepared to truck that off-site. Go to the next slide, please. So, this is our grading and drainage plan. I won't get too technical, but just to understand what's proposed, I think it makes sense just to give you a brief overview of the existing site. As you know, it's mostly covered by pavement or buildings. Drainage is handled through just standard catch basins, run through manholes, and then it's discharged to the municipal system in Lenox Street. It flows unmitigated, largely untreated. So, under this proposed condition, what we've done is provide catch basins with deep sumps. All the outlets will have hoods on them to help capture more of that sediment and oils. It'll run through water quality units or proprietary separators, the swirl chambers for TSS removal, and then discharge to the underground infiltration chambers. Those are those two systems shown in blue. Both of those chambers hold approximately 5,900 cubic feet of storage. That water will be held onsite and recharged into the ground. That water will be held onsite and recharged into the ground during larger storm events. We have equipped them with an emergency overflow where stormwater will leave the site and discharge back to the municipal system where it goes today. The stormwater management system has been designed to reduce the peak rates and volumes runoff from the site during all storm events. We have captured and treated the one, the half-inch water quality volume. We provide the 80% TSS removal, that's the sediment removal, and then, of course, the groundwater recharge requirements. All the roof runoff just will discharge directly right to those systems. It's considered clean, doesn't need to go through the proprietary separators like the rest of the runoff from the pavement. Go to the next slide, please. This is our utility plan. The water is shown here in orange, sewer in blue, gas in green, and then the electric in red. So the existing building is serviced by municipal water, sewer, electric, and private gas. We anticipate those same utilities to service the proposed development. The gas will only be used for the amenity areas. The residential units will be electric. We have that eight-inch water shown in orange, it goes around, loops around the building. We have two hydrants, one near the fire, the fire line at the northwest corner, another hydrant at the southeast corner, covering the site. Sewer's pretty straightforward, we're showing one connection out to a manhole on our property. It then connects to this municipal manhole in Lenox Street. Same with the gas, we're going to reuse the existing gas service if possible. That'll have to be coordinated with the private utility company, and then we're running a single gas service to the meter at the southeast corner. Electric, we are going to reuse the existing utility pole up in the right-of-way for the tell data. It'll, we'll install a riser, go underground from the utility pole back to the building, the, and then install two new utility poles for each of the primary services. So we'll run overhead lines to those new utility poles, set up risers, go underground, run the primaries to the transformers, which are shown, if you scroll up just a hair, it's that red box. The size of that's been coordinated with NORwood light requirements, and then we'll go back to the building underground with the secondaries. And then lastly, EV chargers, we do have 20% EV spaces proposed. We have four day-one EV chargers. Those are located up near the main entrance. Day-one meaning they will be installed with pedestals, charging ports, they can be used when the development is built. Then we have an additional 34 EV-ready spaces along the two parking trays on the north side of the building, meaning we will be running all the conduits, the underground lines to those spaces, but the charging posts won't be installed at day one, and they'll be installed at a later date as needed. But they'll be ready. And so that's all I have. So I think at that point, we can open it up to questions, comments.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
The charging stations that aren't day-one, is the utility sized for that in the future or you're going to have to retrofit later?
No, the utility will be sized for those to support that.
Thank you.
I think I should take a minute to remind the public that this part of the meeting, site plan review, is a byright application. The second part that we're going to go over, the extra floor, that they're asking for is where the public would be more involved. Sarah, is that kind of, am I hitting that?
Yeah, so site plan review is a more technical overview to make sure that a particular proposal complies with the design standards that the zoning bylaw sets forth, that things like the engineering of the drainage and landscaping, lighting, parking arrangements, and so on. That is not a public hearing, it's also not discretionary. The planning board conducts the review and will offer its approval, but it's not an up or down on the project. It's just related to making sure that the design is as close to our standards or exceeding our standards as possible. The special permit that's being requested is limited to the density bonus for that fifth floor in exchange for the improved stormwater improvements. So that is a public hearing, that's a special permit, that's why the letters may have received notices in the mail. That's the portion, as the chair put it, that will offer an opportunity for the public to be engaged and offer comments.
Thank you. If anyone, does anyone have any questions from the board for either engineering or landscaping, architects?
I know W. I'll be quick.
All right, Derek, please.
Go ahead.
I've got a question regarding the roof area. Has there been any consideration, do you have any vegetated roof area? Yes, no?
I'm not the engineer, Mr. Chairman, but...
But the first one to stand up.
They nodded at me. No, part of what we're looking for here is a building, what we plan is a building that will have highly reflective materials. We're trying to avoid heat islands, so there are different approaches to that. The approach that we are looking at is the reflective materials rather than putting vegetation on the roof.
Okay.
There can be...
No, no, I...
It's also, comes a maintenance issue sometimes.
Well, if it's low maintenance, low profile, you know, the vegetated roof, sure. And the other kind of comment is, what about having PV, the solar panels up on the roof?
That's above my level of competence, I don't know whether...
So it would be designed to, for future AMI, structural capacity?
So it is designed for that?
Yes.
Well, what about the power to have that in there?
We would have to allocate some space for the inverters.
Is this a consideration?
I think it's a consideration as we get further into design. You know, there's roof for the mechanicals, there could be roof for the green...
Yeah, no, I know.
And then there's room for the PVs, right? So you can kind of mix and match. You know, there's a kind of an evolving story on the energy codes as well here. So I think it's all kind of fair game. We're not saying no, it's just, you know, at this date, at this juncture, what we have is a highly reflective roof material, and we've kind of laid out mechanicals as, you know, as best we could at this time. So I think that's something that, you know, isn't out of the question by any stretch.
Good. I hope so.
Thank you, Derek.
Staying with the roof, why did we go 75%? I don't...
I think we're actually, do you know what we are? I think we're 100%.
Yeah, we're 100.
The bylaw is a minimum of 75% highly reflective roof. We have 100%. It's the same material, just across the board.
Okay. And is the parking going to be assigned for the renters? Are they going to, you're going to say?
Yeah, I think there's going to be a handful of spaces that are not assigned.
Okay.
And then the rest would be assigned.
And it's one elevator?
I think we have two.
Yes.
Could you explain to me what a junior one-bedroom is?
Yes. It is a fancy way of saying a studio-sized apartment with a partial wall.
Okay.
Around the bedroom area.
And then what would a, the other one?
A one-bed?
No, the two-bed that is called something else.
A group-two unit?
Yes, thank you. What's a group-two unit?
Yeah, it's just ADA accessible, just a code reference that has lower appliances...
Roll-in...
Thresholds, exactly.
Yeah, it's called group-two, where you don't need to have the AMI for accessibility.
I got nothing.
That's a code requirement. And then we also have hearing accessible units as well.
Hearing accessible?
Hearing impaired unit.
What does that mean?
It's like the fire alarm goes off, it's a loud noise.
Okay, all right.
This is all code.
So I'm going to ask, the trees that are on the, I think you're calling it the north side that faces the MBTA, is that the north side, gentlemen? Okay. It's, I have pictures, left the phone in the car. It's all trees. It abuts the parking lot. I don't know which one are yours and which one are, but they're not three-inch caliper trees. They're big, big boys. How many are you leaving?
We could look at that more specifically. I know that we were mainly focused on the screening against the tracks on the west side and then additional screening on the south and east sides.
Why are you more concerned with the train and the parking lot? I mean, it's just a parking lot.
I think we want screening all the way around. I, you know, that's the answer. We're not trying to cut down, you know, we want to save as many trees as we can and have as much of a green buffer as we can around the entire perimeter.
So if the, if your lot line, it's hard to tell on this, and it's hard to tell when you're standing there in front of it because you don't know where the lot line starts. If your lot line, let's say, runs down the middle of that bank of trees, which is about, maybe the landscape architect will know, maybe it's about a 20-foot where the trees are, the MBTA, the trees, and then the lot for Sarah, Sarah Grin, Sarah, whatever, your lot. If that's 20 feet and your trees run down the middle, right down the 10-foot line, would you be willing to not cut those trees down? Just asking.
I think we don't want to cut down any trees, we don't have to. The site plan that we have, you know, just has a double tray of parking. We're not trying to go any further than that in terms of removing any kind of vegetation that exists. And I don't know what the law means.
Yeah, so the lot line runs, pretty much shadows right between that thick, dense tree cover. But any trees that are located, existing trees on our property would likely come down as a result of the parking.
I kind of knew that answer. I can try, I knew what the answer was going to be anyway. Yes, go ahead.
Chopping trees down if they don't have to.
Does anyone else need... Ernie, please.
All right, I got, thank you for one of my questions, was snow removal, I think you addressed that. Trash removal, again, it's going to be internal, so there's no dumpster areas outside, things like that, thank you. I do have a question, one of the waivers you're asking for was, I think Attorney Hearn, I wrote down, front Lenox parking. Could you, I'm on, I'm on C-102 page, and could you just show me where those spots are? Because I'm, which? Visitor one, visitor two, visitor three? Yeah, is that?
Yeah.
Are those actual?
Parallel parking spot.
Okay.
Yep, so, this is three parallel visitor spots, and then it's one, two, and like three inches of three. These three spots at the southeast corner, and the three spots that are parallel in front of the building.
That's three spots, that's it?
Three plus three, six spots.
Okay. I do have a question on this tandem parking. You have 24 spaces. My guess is when you have, well, you have 169 spots, or asking for 169 spots, I don't have an issue with that. How does the tandem parking work? I mean, is it same family? I mean, somebody's got two cars?
For sure.
I can understand that, but usually these are geared, these apartments are geared, hopefully, to people with, you know, one car or less. So, I mean, those will be reserved for somebody who has, who wants two cars there?
Yeah, it's, most likely those are going to be for two beds only.
For the two bedrooms?
Two beds only, and it's going to be one unit, no matter what it is. We're not going to have a valet or anything like that, it's just self-managed. Those two spots will be started to a single unit.
I know, I know, Sarah, on residential, and Attorney Hearn obviously would know this, on residential homes and like three-deckers and things, we allow tandem parking. And I'm assuming the same rules apply here. We have no, nothing that says we can't do it, right? And my last question is, we, there was no talk of any affordable units. Do we have a number of, how many are there?
We are proposing 20% affordable.
20%?
The number is 29 affordable units. We have given a breakdown in our filings of, I don't know if we have that available. They are the affordable units.
29, you have 29.
29, and they'll be spread throughout the building, and they will be spread among the different styles of units. And they will be the same in terms of construction as the not affordable. So they'll be indistinguishable in that respect. So we have parceled them out, and we have a table that we provided to the planning department last week that shows the breakdown of those. I don't have that in front of me at the moment.
And we have no three bedrooms?
No three bedrooms.
No three bedrooms. That's, Mr. Chairman, right now, that's all I have. Yes, please.
I had an opportunity to review, I apologize, I can't pull it up right now. I did have an opportunity to review their affordable proposal and confirm that the configuration of the units was satisfactory. What we look for is not only that they're meeting the numerical requirements, that full 20%, but that it's an even mix across bedroom sizes, and that the location is consistent. And I was satisfied with what I saw.
Attorney Hearn, if I could ask, would you consider some deeply affordable units such as, I think they're 50%, AMI? We got a, we got a nice letter from a resident that was interested in trying to get some actual affordable units, you know, something, you know, under 2,000 for a, was it a one-bedroom for, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure what your numbers are, but, you know, something, would you guys be amenable to some sort of discussion about...
Well...
Something a little more affordable than based on $140,000, you know, salary or whatever it is?
Well, I don't think it's quite that high, but we did get that letter this morning. I'm aware of it. I think the signatories to that letter, my understanding is they're very much in favor of this, and we're very much in favor of the bylaw. I think that was, I read that letter as being an argument that the town needs to come up with a way to provide more of those 50% AMI. Find a way to do that, not necessarily this project. And, you know, we're following the bylaw the town meeting passed, which is 20% of affordable units, 20% based on 80% AMI. Not saying we can't, but, well, I can't say we can't either. I mean, that's up to my client to give an answer on that. But it's not in the bylaw, we follow the bylaw. And I read, and Ms. Hested and Mr. Ronan, I know them both, and I appreciate their work in this area, but I read it to be, the town's got to figure out a way to do this, and here's an opportunity to discuss it. But I think they also said they were supporting this project. So, as it is. So I don't know, I don't think there's anything else we can say at this point.
All right, well, any other comments from the board?
Two things. I understand that the waiver, you're seeking, what, 24 extra parking spots? Is that the...
No, nine spots.
Oh, nine? I'm sorry, over the max, 24 over the minimum, right? Is 145...
No, the minimum is 1.1 per unit. So the minimum is the same as the maximum. It calculates at 160. We're looking for 169.
Okay. And the fact that you have the large MBTA parking lot next door in terms of weekend guests and all that, does that really figure into the...
I'm not going to comment on that because that's not our property.
Sure. I, my real, my only other question is, is there a sidewalk, I'm unfamiliar with the specifics here, is there a sidewalk on Lenox coming on that side of the street, southward, currently, in front of the train?
Beyond our property?
North of it, like where the train...
We're going to add a sidewalk to connect to the MBTA lot.
There's an existing sidewalk on the east side of Lenox.
Oh, so it's on the opposite side of you? All right, because I was curious if there was one on the other side? If, because I know there's that parking, that one-level parking on the street. I didn't know if you had something that looped around it, but there's not a sidewalk north of you on that side?
No.
Okay, thank you.
There is an existing crosswalk there, though, that we are connecting to right at the MBTA entrance.
Sure. All right, thank you. Sure. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Shan?
I just have two questions. On the tandem, it was just that small section on the south side. And how many were, how many were there there?
24 spaces.
12, 12. 12.
So 12 times 2, 12.
Yeah. And the circulation?
Yep.
I saw somewhere it was mentioned, maybe we'll go one-way, but you have it two ways, and, and that, you can just tell me if it's going to suffice. There's no, there's no reason to go one-way, or there's no reason?
We have a 24-foot drive aisle, you know, it allows for two-way. We have a few kind of property management level reasons for that, but yeah, I think we're, we're very happy with the two-way.
And I think the bylaw is okay with that.
Yeah, this whole, this whole, uh, site plan was vetted about five or six times by the fire department already. The size of the loading, uh, sorry, the size of the fire line, fire lane, the loading, the locations of both, where the hydrants are, they got to, well, we planted around the hydrants, and he goes, oh, there's maybe three or four rounds of revisionary with them.
Mr. Chairman, we had, just so people understand the process to some extent, we had meetings with department heads early on, about the time of the filing. We had a follow-up meeting on August 12th with, uh, the fire department, the building commissioner, and others. Uh, in between, there were extensive discussions going on with our folks, our design folks, and the fire department, uh, working out details. So, uh, this light department was involved too, because they, they've got to get the power there. You know, we've, we've met with the department heads, we've responded to their suggestions and their concerns, and these things are, and you folks know this, but I don't know that, you know, some of the people here, or some of the people watching it, don't necessarily know, these things aren't, don't come to you in a vacuum where we just toss something on the table and say, this is it. These, you know, we were making revisions last week. I filed last week a supplemental, um, narrative, a supplement to the narrative that I had filed, uh, a few weeks before, uh, to lay out the changes that had been made based upon the conversations and comments made from various department heads. So we've, uh, I think responded, uh, pretty well to what they were concerned about. Fire department was satisfied, and we certainly pay heed to what they're concerned about because that's, uh, public safety we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any outstanding items that are holding anything up as far as any of these department reviews, or?
I think the, they have satisfied the technical requirements. There were some comments from Mark Bryan that needed to be incorporated into a final plan. Uh, that's nothing that couldn't be addressed in a condition. I would recommend that you go through each waiver request one by one. The waivers being the length of the parking space, the drive aisle, and the request to have those six spaces within that front setback. I would review those three, um, and come to consensus on, on each of those three before you take a vote on the final site plan approval.
Okay. Debbie?
Um, are you going to have an onsite super?
Yeah, yeah.
And is it, it's probably in here, forgive me, but I can't read these little prints. Um, the curbing that would go around to extend to the sidewalk going up toward the MBTA, which is on public, you know, you going to grant it that, or?
Yeah, so we would need to work with the town to, um, you know, get the construction permits to build that sidewalk that connects to the MBTA.
You're asking if the curbing material was granted?
Correct.
Oh, yes, yep, sorry. Yep, all the curbing within the right of way will be granted.
Okay, thank you. And total, total green, again, it's probably in here someplace. After you're done with the project, what will your total green space be on the property percentage?
The open space.
Open space, green space, yeah.
Well, we have our minimum open space of 26% proposed, where 10% is required.
So 10% is required, and you've got 26?
26.
Okay. And on record, geez, I can't read my own writing. Sorry. I, no, I can't even read my own writing. So we're at 52 units per acre on this project? Is that correct? You got 27 acres with 145 units. And 51 beds, not, no, 50 studios?
51 beds.
10% of those junior ones, 6, uh, 65%.
But I'm math challenged, so I broke it down in numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so is it, I think 57?
15 of the junior one beds. I think you have it, you have it too. 10% of the junior one beds, 65% of the one beds, 25% are the two beds.
Right, I'm, I'm doing numbers, you're doing percentages.
So the totals are 50, 94, and 36?
That's what I was getting, getting to, okay, thank you. Into the record. Oh, are these, are these going into the, into the record, the letters from?
Yes.
Mystic, um, David, Jeffrey? And Kenneth? All going in?
Yes, so all the letters that we received, including three, three more that were submitted over the weekend, all have been added to the file of record and were circulated digitally.
Okay, and we don't have them here, but we have them digitally?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Uh, a general question. Uh, this, the site has, uh, history of chemical manufacturing. Obviously, there is some, there's got to be some mitigation. Can, can you speak to how that's controlled, how that's monitored? Uh, what happens, who's notified?
So all this is regulated by the state. Um, it's through, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's MCP, 21E is kind of the, the term for it. We hire what's called a licensed site professional, LSP. That designation is provided by the state. In this case, we're, uh, proceeding with Haley and Aldrich. Look them up, they're, you know, one of the bigger shops around town. Um, and so to date, we've done, I think, eleven or 14 borings all over the property. We actually just had a removal of some of the underground storage tanks by the existing tenant, Savagrant. So we're kind of underway with some of that cleanup work already. You know, basically, if there is a, what's known as a reportable condition, which can depend on what the finding is, you know, the concentration of whatever that finding is above a state threshold, then, um, our Haley and Aldrich, our LSP, will go through the necessary regulars, regulatory steps to clean up, uh, that finding, and then ship it to the appropriate, this, it's called a disposal site, a landfill, basically. Uh, and then throughout this process, there are state-mandated, um, reports, depending on what the findings are, that our LSP will need to submit to the state, all that's public record. And so that's kind of high-level the process. You know, I can try my best to get more technical, but it, you know, it's basically a state-mandated, state-run process. Then we hire a consultant that is licensed by the state, that, you know, goes through that process and disposes of, of those findings, you know, if they come up.
So it's all covered. Taken care of.
We, we have no choice. It's absolutely taken care of. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Does anyone, um, want, want to go through our, uh, our list here of?
Yeah, I did have, are there three or four? Special permits, I think you said four, and Dave said three.
There's one special permit, and that's only for the fifth-story density bonus and the stormwater.
And then there's two other ones.
The other are waivers
Right.
that you have the ability to grant through site plan review.
So that's three total?
The waivers are the drive aisle, the size of the parking space, and the six spaces within the front setback. Those are three separate waiver requests that can be approved through site plan review.
Okay, and then the fourth is the other one, is the roof.
The number, so there, I think there are four.
That's right, the number of states.
Yeah, okay. That's why I was going to.
One special permit, four waivers.
Right.
And the, and the special permit is governed by the section itself, not the usual special permit criteria, but by 9.5, .g, .6, and the establishment of, have those conditions been met?
If I, if I, if I may, so the, the section 9.5 allows the planning board to grant waivers of the design requirements?
Right.
Without a special permit?
Right, I'm, I'm talking about the density bonus.
The density bonus is the only special.
That's the only special permit. The rest of it is waivers. Yeah, from, from the bylaws' actual requirements.
Uh, what is the wish of the board at this point regarding waivers?
I would, uh, let's go through the three waivers, discuss those.
Okay.
So they know where, and then we can talk about the special permit at the end after that.
Thank you. Let's, uh, start with, yes, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Mr. Petchakowski completely there. Uh, he was requesting or suggesting what?
We were going to just discuss the, not the special permit, the three waivers.
I think they're four.
To, to kind of give you, you know, where you, where, kind of give you the lay of the land, where you're at on a waiver, so.
Let's confirm, if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, one more time.
The depth of the parking air, the spaces, the setback, the parking setback.
Yep, yeah.
The, um, number of parking spaces
Yep.
and the parking aisle width. That gives us four.
Okay, width.
We're, we're all taking turns forgetting. I started it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, as far as, uh, the depth of the parking spaces, they're going from 18.5 feet to 18 feet. Uh, does anyone have any opinion on that?
I have no problem.
Surprisingly enough, no. I can tell how you're looking at it.
No problem with it. Do we need to vote on each?
I think it makes sense.
Okay. Do they have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver request to reduce the depth of the parking, is the depth right?
Yep.
From 18 and a half feet to 18 feet?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's one. Number of parking spaces, they are adding nine. Are there any comments on that? How does, how does everyone feel about that?
I have no problem with that.
No problem.
Ready for a motion?
I appreciate them adding some extra parking spots because of, for, for less spillage, so you, we talked about that in depth last time. Somebody listened, wow, wow. Yes?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver request to allow for 169 parking spaces.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, the drive aisle width, uh, having a 24-foot width instead of the 26 required. Any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman, I just have no problem with it. The fire department is on board with it. They're, they're, and, uh, when you go through the map, there's a fire department turning ratio, uh, rate, turning radius map, and, and the fire department, uh, has no issue with the 24-foot width.
Mr. Chairman, can we just correct one thing?
Yes.
28 feet normally?
Is it 20, okay.
Yeah, 28 to 24.
28 to 24 is what we're.
Okay, yep. All right, from 24 to 24.
Going to 20, going from 28 to 24.
Do I have a, a motion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the width of the travel lane, is that what we're calling it? From 28 feet to 24 feet.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last, uh, parking setback requirement, that's placing six parking spaces towards the front of the building. Any opinions on that?
Mr. Chairman, just on that, uh, I don't have a, a problem with it, and the main reason is because they pushed the building back 20 feet. You know, they, they didn't, uh, they went from a 20-foot setback to a 40-foot setback, and the parking will be back, so it's not, it's, the parking is, is farther setback than normally would be allowed, so, uh, and because of that, I think that's, that's not a problem with those three spots up front, like that.
Can I just ask one question? Where those spots are, is that still a 24-foot width drive-through? Okay, it doesn't shorten, okay. That was my question.
Mr. Chair, if I, are those temporary visitor, like, short-term parking?
All right, do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, make another motion, uh, to allow for, um, those spaces to be built within the 20-foot setback as, as a waiver request. I think it's six total?
Yep, three and three.
Three and three to be built within the 20-foot area that otherwise would be prevented. 40 foot, I'm sorry.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, uh, Sarah, any, uh?
The roof.
So, what's the wish of the board at this point?
Well, we have to vote on the roof, right?
That's a separate, that is site plan, uh, special permit.
Those votes should be separate. You should take two votes, one for the site plan approval, and then one specifically for the, the density bonus.
Yeah, yeah, so because, because this was, uh, passed by town meeting, this is allowed by right, the building itself. The density bonus, the extra floor, is what would need public comment, and that will be talking about next. So is everyone ready to vote tonight, or, yes, Joe?
I have a question for the, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Do you need, they're okay to go forward on this, or?
Um, so we, we have not received approval of the zoning bylaw from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Their review is relative to whether or not our bylaw complies with the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act or Section 3A of the zoning act. That, that review is still pending. We did receive approval, approval on the proposed language. So we did a pre-review. The final review is still pending. However, the zoning bylaw passed town meeting and was submitted to the Attorney General's office as a standard, and we did receive that approval. So those are the, the two approvals that put zoning into effect. We don't have the ability at this point not to consider applications under this new zoning because the Attorney General's stamp of approval is what's required, uh, for, for that zoning to go into effect. If, for whatever reason, and it's not anticipated, but if for whatever reason the state came back from housing livable communities and offered some required changes, we would have to go through town meeting and make those changes. But that would not render any approvals made at this time non-compliant with the zoning because the zoning was passed and approved by town meeting and the Attorney General. Does that make sense? A lot of the big parts there, so.
But it wouldn't affect this decision if anything changed at, at the state level?
Yeah, so the state, remember this, it, there's the project and then there's the zoning. The state's reviewing the zoning.
Right.
And so if they had problems with that, our, our remediation, our next step would be to make those changes, bring them back to town meeting, you know.
And how would that affect this project?
The project has to follow the current zoning, and the current zoning is in place and was approved by the Attorney General's office. It's not contingent on whether or not our bylaw follows the state law. It's still, if it complies with our current bylaw, then the project can go forward.
Okay. I think.
Ideally, we would have received all our approvals at the same time, and that would have been cleaner, but here we are.
I, I think the, the concern might be, uh, is the 20% going to be effective? Is that going to happen? Is there any sort of out for the developer, or, you know, I guess that's the concern.
By way of, by way of background, um, the state's requirements for 3A, um, for municipalities writing their zoning, said that a municipality couldn't require over 10% of the, of the development to be deed-restricted as affordable housing. The rationale being, it's a, a large geographic part of the state that's affected with lots of different markets, and some of those markets might not be able to support anything greater than 10%. So, if a municipality in one of those markets required twenty percent, then it might discourage development. So, that's the rationale for that. Towns that wanted to require more could, so long as they had a third-party economic feasibility analysis conducted to study that local market and verify that it could support the higher requirement, that that higher requirement would not discourage or, you know, stop development. So, our economic feasibility analysis was done, was submitted to EO HLC, it was approved. So, the affordability piece of it has been approved. But even if it weren't, and I know that the uncertainty of the HLC overall approval is still kind of in the air, remember that the requirement is a minimum. At any point, a development that came forward under any of our other multifamily bylaws downtown, or on Route One, if they proposed more than we require, that would never be a problem, right? So, even if there were a problem later on down the road with our requirement, there would never be anything stopping the individual project from giving us more affordable housing than we're requiring. The restriction was on whether or not we could require it, not whether a developer could provide it.
Okay. Yes, that, I, thank you, Joe, please.
I think we'd be talking about getting a certain amount of documentation to that thing, from the developer, an agreement of some sort at the twenty percent need.
Yep, so they're, they would have to apply to the state under the local action unit program. My office has a role in reviewing those applications and making sure that they fit our requirements. And if they, they didn't, they would be fanned out of compliance.
Mr. Chairman, further to that, we would expect that if the board approves it, you might condition an approval upon, before the project goes forward, or at the appropriate stage, what Ms. Dixon just mentioned, getting the necessary affordable documents in place with the Commonwealth, as well as with the town. We've done this before, we get the approvals, and then we go through the paperwork with the folks in Boston to get everything signed up. So, we would expect that you'd probably impose that type of condition on any approval related to the project. And we don't have any problem with that, I mean, that's a, you know, if you approve it that way, we know we have to go take those steps. It's not, I don't want people to think this is some vague idea out there that, you know, won't ever get followed up. I can assure you, my dealings with our planning department, they will be following it up, as well as the folks in Boston, so.
Any, any other thoughts on the deeply affordable units, now that we're talking?
Well, right now, we're, we've got a proposal for twenty percent, which is arguably exceeds what the OHLC is talking about. We think we're keeping with the spirit of what Norwood has voted over the last few years. And we've made our decisions and our designs and plans based on that provision of the by, the existing bylaw, which is in effect. So, I can't commit to you anything other than, you know, what we've proposed to you. It's nice to be a leader on some things, but I don't think we can be a leader on that right now.
Oh, it's gonna be a beautiful building, you could throw a couple of units in there. It's got a pool.
It changes, you start doing that, Mr. Chairman, you change all the numbers, all the calculations, and how this project, whether this project works. These projects don't have a lot of extra meat on the bones, and I've seen that before in other projects, so it, it is a, this is a project where we're following the bylaw, twenty percent, which is in excess of the normal forty B requirements that bind all the cities and towns, and we've been willing to do that. So, we're, we're following the bylaw that's before you. As I said before, I think that suggestion of a, of the deeply affordable, or whatever we wanna call them, the fifty percent AMI, is not without merit at all, but there needs to be another way to do it. It can't, and I think the suggestion in the correspondence this morning was, the town needs to find a way to do that. And this is not the project where I think that can be done at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just on that point, I think one of the other ways you can get a bonus is to do some deep cut. You know, there were several criteria to get that, that bonus floor, one of them was deep cut affordability. And, and then it was, this is, the stormwater was another way to obtain the fifth floor. So, there is a, there is a mechanism in the bylaw that will allow for that. It's, but it's not required by every, it's up to the developer to choose which route, which road he wants to take to achieve the bonus. This particular applicant chose the stormwater route.
It would require an additional five percent affordable units. And that additional five percent would be at the lower, it's not like we're trading out twenty percent for five percent. It'd be twenty percent, and then five percent more, that becomes a twenty-five percent affordable project. That might be too much.
Would there be such, may I?
Sure.
There be such a thing as instead of twenty percent affordable, ten percent deep?
That's not what the bylaw says.
I understand that, I understand that, but is that something that can be negotiated?
I, I think the whole premise of this application.
I understand.
The as-of-right use is based upon what town meeting voted in March, section 9.5. And it has some choices to be made, but that's not one of the choices, to say, let's not do twenty percent, let's do another number, and then kick in the fifty percent AMI number. That, that doesn't, that's not how it's written.
It's not, I understand.
Yeah. I mean, I agree, as a, speaking as a longtime resident, that letter that I got this morning, there's a lot to commend in that letter, and that's something the town ought to look at, as a town, as planning, as town meeting, and so forth. But the bylaw that we're operating under here tonight does not call for that, nor does it seem to even allow it.
Thank you, Attorney. So, does the board have any, any feeling on voting on this tonight? Do you wanna think about it overnight?
Mr. Chairman, are you gonna open this up, the special permit discussion?
There are two votes, so.
I think if you vote now on the site plan review, if for whatever reason the bonus special permit is continued or falls through, or whatever, that would throw his entire calculations off. So, as far as parking, number of parking spots needed, all of that, so I think maybe we should, just a suggestion would be that we hold off on the site plan review, vote until after we have the discussion and vote on the special permit. Because I think that if, if that for some reason failed, it would throw off the whole calculations on the, on the plan.
That, that makes a lot of sense, thank you. All right, so we'll open it up for the special permit. Is there? Let's see here.
Just have a comment on, on the special permit?
Sure, Ernie, please.
So, you're asking for a fifth floor, and you're using the stormwater path to achieve it. So, just so I'm clear, and let me, if the engineers will tell me if I'm wrong, there are two types of, of stormwater ways to go. One is redevelopment, and one is new development. So, where this project is, is in theory redevelopment, the stormwater requirements are not as stringent, and basically, it's what's there is there, and the stormwater requirements are much less stringent than new development. We're asking you to use the new development criteria, which is, and I guess this is for the, for the audience as well, which is a lot more stringent, a lot more required of you, handles the stormwater, and a much better controlled, I mean, there's a lot more to the new development rules, which you are going to use than the redevelopment, am I right?
That's correct. Yep, yeah, so for, try to keep it high level without getting too technical, for redevelopment, there are two primary standards that you only need to meet to the maximum extent practical, and those are the recharge requirements and the water quality volume requirements. And those are typically the two standards that, you know, provide the most benefit for stormwater management. And as, you know, designing this for new development standards, we need to meet all those water quality, volume requirements, recharge volume requirements, a hundred percent. There's no maximum extent practical, you know, we have to meet it, and that's it.
So, it's a lot more involved?
It is.
A lot more design, the wa, the stormwater will be handled in a much more efficient, more beneficial way than under redevelopment standards, correct?
That's correct.
And that's the reason why we, it's in there, the town meeting voted to do this, because we know it has a stormwater problem, as we all know, and this really helps this particular parcel to combat that.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
We've also, yes, Ernie, sorry, Joe, please, please.
There are two requirements to get the bonuses, not there?
Yes.
That is, okay, and the other would be the roof?
The roof.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've, you've chosen upgraded stormwater on the entire site, and as one of your options out of the à la carte is the reflective roof to basically cool off the building, and to reflect the heat back up. Is, is there anyone on the board have any questions for, as far as the stormwater or the reflective roof?
Where I got the seventy-five percent was in one of the documents, but it-
That's the minimum per zoning, and we have one percent.
Okay, all right.
So, you tie a roof as the-
But I thought I read it was seventy-five, I know that's a requirement, but I thought it was in there, but you're going a hundred, okay, all right.
Okay, if I could open up to the public, please state your name and address, and, sure, come on up.
Hi, thank you, I'm Elizabeth Hested, twenty-six, Plimpton Ave, and I'm one of the founders of Norwood for All, who, my colleague Pat sent the email this morning, and I just do want to state for the record that we are in support of this project. In general, we want more affordable housing, they are offering quite a bit of not deeply affordable, but affordable. We, we want to see more development, zero percent of, zero units built, it's like, or sorry, if we don't build any more units, we don't get any affordable housing, so we do think this is a step in the right direction. And then, just also, as a neighbor to this site, I live just on the other side of the commuter rail station, I'm really excited for this to be redeveloped, and to have a better stormwater system, and just like a nicer place in the neighborhood, so, thank you. And at the more density, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone online that would like to? Sure. Anne, Anne McAvitts. I think you're muted.
No, go ahead.
So, yes, please. Come on up. Sure.
Jean Taylor, District 8, town meeting member. How, in comparison to the height of the block, is this building?
As far as scale?
On Long Street, the block, where your apartments. What's the height difference?
Between four floors and five floors?
Height, feet?
Yep.
The, are you talking about each story?
The block apartment building on Long Street. The block apartments on Long Street.
Here we go, okay.
That's a different couple of height.
Well, five stories.
I think I'm unmuted now.
Anne, we'll, Anne, we'll come right back to you if we could.
No. Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Who's answering the height question for Jean?
She's asking comparison to the building across the street, so how much higher, taller, will this apartment building be?
About eleven to twelve feet.
Eleven to twelve feet higher?
Higher, but with a setback, forty feet from this-
Sorry, but it's taller.
That's correct.
Okay.
Forty.
And just your general question, if this only went four stories, I understand, you know, the compromising in the water, what would the drainage be with a four-story? I mean, would we just say, get it, and we don't do any special drainage, because you don't get four, another story?
Through the chair.
Yes, please, sir.
It would be, it would need to meet the redevelopment standards, so we wouldn't be held to the same quality of volume, the large volume that we're providing with those underground chambers, it would be significantly reduced.
So, would you handle it the same way as if there was another story?
No. To get the bonus height, we're required to meet the redevelopment standards.
That's what I mean, so if there wasn't a bonus, then you'd handle it differently?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make clear, who would be handled in compliance with the applicable regulations? It's not as if we'd be doing something that isn't allowed, we'd be doing exactly what's allowed. If we, over and above, we seek to qualify for the bonus.
Yes, the extra floor would trigger a higher, a higher quality drainage system.
I get it. Thank you.
Anne McAvitts, I think you were on deck, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm opposed to a fifth story, all due respect to Ms. Hested, she lives a whole gigantic, oh, Anne McAvitts, Cross Street, District Seven.
Thank you.
Representative, with all due respect to Ms. Hested, she does not live near where this is going to be built. She is way over the other side, okay? The other issue is more people, I do have a question, are dogs going to be allowed?
Will, could someone answer that, if dogs will be allowed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, a fifth story means more dogs. Avalon has proved to be a real pain when it comes to dogs. There's an overflow in the neighborhood, and they don't pick up after the dogs. We don't need any more density. The other thing that I'm upset about is the extra drainage, the reflective roof, and all of that stuff, that should already be a mandated requirement, they shouldn't be perks to put more density in the town. Somebody explain to me what this reflective ceiling, roof is.
It's basically designed to reflect the solar rays away from the building instead of absorbing it.
So, that would be put back into the atmosphere?
Correct.
So, we have global warming as it is, and we have a plan now to encourage more global warming, does that make sense?
I'm sorry, could you speak a little louder, please?
This is, I'm Jacob Sark, I'm a true asset manager, one of the co-developers. The white roof ends up reducing the temperature of the building, the reflected light actually leaves our atmosphere entirely. It's reflected back into space, it's not capturing their atmosphere at all, which ends up lowering temperatures around the building and in the area.
Anne, could you hear that?
Sort of, but how does it not affect the atmosphere? I mean, if it's, how far is that gonna be sent back up? I'm not buying it, I'm not buying.
Our, our developer has let us know that the, the light actually continues to travel out of the atmosphere and into space.
But what about the heat?
That is one in the same, I believe.
So, these aren't solar panels, perfect?
So, Anne?
Correct.
Anne, if there was a dark surface, would it absorb the heat?
Oh, I understand that, I understand that completely.
And that, that creates the Hidal effect, and so you get more of the warmth, all right?
Now, in the neighborhood, I'm in a neighborhood where we're vehemently opposed to the- Now, in the neighborhood, I'm in a neighborhood where we're vehemently opposed to the situation that's been proposed by Mark Lion and Company down to Hennessy Field. This water retention, as I understood it, and the way it was voted on, was all of the water would stay on their property. None of it would ever go into municipal. So why is there an outlet to go out to municipal?
That's, I believe that's a technical question for our engineer here, if he could respond.
Sure, yeah, so it's, it's meant to be an emergency overflow, so most of the storm-
But an emergency is a flood. Excuse me for interrupting, an emergency is a flood. We don't need any more water going into our system if we're getting torrential rain and semi-flooding to begin with. We don't need it coming from someplace else.
So we've reduced the peak rate and the total volume of runoff leaving the site as currently designed, compared to the existing?
So it's an improvement, I'm sorry, Ms. McAlwitz, it's, it's an improvement over what's there now for drainage?
In fact, but there's, you're going to be putting, you're going to be adding impervious surfaces. A building is impervious. A parking lot is impervious, okay? So the water's got to go somewhere. What I am saying is, the definition of an emergency is a flood or a flash flood, and what's going to happen is it's going to be sent down to the drains, and you basically said it's going down Lennox, which means it's going to go down Cost, it's going to go down Willow, it's going to go down all the other streets. I have a serious problem with that.
So all the stormwater goes to the same, it's going to the same location where it goes today, and it only leaves the site during the large storm events, like when you get, you know, those heavy, heavy 10-year storms, 100-year storms, that's when it will overflow into municipal system, but on-
Well, according to, according to Mark Lion and Company, there is no such thing as 100-year, 100-year storms. They're like every five years or so.
Ms. McAlwitz, if I could give Attorney Hearn a moment to interject?
Mr. Chairman, we normally at these meetings go back and forth through the chair. Miss, our engineer was trying to answer the question and is being interrupted on multiple occasions. Perhaps it's difficult, I realize, when people are online, they can't see maybe somebody speaking, but we can be, ask for a little more care with respect to that. He can give an answer, then we can have the back and forth through you.
I apologize.
Thank you. Ms. McAlwitz, did you have another question or comment?
I'm, I still don't have an answer. I don't think any, if there's an emergency water situation, it was my understanding during town meeting, that none of the water from any of these three A structures for perks would go out into the neighborhood or the municipal. We don't need any more density either.
Okay, thank you.
Engineer can answer.
Would you like to respond to that, or are we?
I think we're good.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Yes, please, ma'am.
So, I live on Lennox Street.
Name and address, please.
Diagonally across, Teresa Dooley.
Name and address, please.
Teresa Dooley.
Address?
246 Lennox Street. I live diagonally across. I'm not necessarily opposed as to looking better, but I think five stories is excessive. Just from a neighborhood perspective alone, it's really excessive. It's, it's a lot, and you don't live there, we do. The traffic can be pretty bad, speeding up and down the cars, and, I mean, I don't know how many cars are going to be there, but that's, it's excessive, five stories and how many more people in that area. Also, the neighbors that live on Shaw Street, I think, were just asked their roofline to come down. So we're asking someone that's building a house to bring their roofline down, yet we're allowing five stories? I don't know, it just seems weird.
Hi, Cheryl Nadelli, Willow Street, couple of questions. My first question is, with all of the information that we've heard tonight, the one question that hasn't been answered is, why? Why is the fifth floor being requested?
Is that a question for the board, or is that a question for the developer, or?
I'm asking anyone who can answer that question.
I, I'll take a swing at it, a quick one. In general, there's a housing crisis. The more housing, the better, is kind of the idea. Everyone has their opinions on what that means and where to put it, and why Norwood versus Foxborough versus Sharon versus Walpole, but the state has come in and said that we need more housing in the state as a whole, so we've complied with what they've asked us to comply with. That gave this developer a right to build a building, up to four stories. We designed the availability of a fifth floor through improvements to the site, basically. And these improvements to the site were mainly environmental. We had the flooding to Norwood Hospital. Every, it's been said a million times, if we could improve the, the drainage in town, that would be a huge bonus, especially project for project going into the future. So that is kind of weighed heavily for its value. As far as the extra à la carte choices they have to add to that option, that's up to the developer, and it's our job to assess what's in front of us for that extra story to see if, if it's worthy.
I, I don't know that that specifically answers my question.
I apologize.
No, 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 that's, that's okay. Maybe the developers can answer the question. I'm just, because town meeting approved the four stories, but now we're asking for five, so is there, is it need, is it greed, is it, I don't know what it, what it is?
Mr. Chairman, I can perhaps answer that.
Please.
The town meeting approved the option for a fifth story. It's, it's in the bylaw.
It's in the bylaw.
And the density bonus calls for certain steps to be taken, certain improvements to be made, and that is what is proposed here. So this is not coming out of thin air. This is right in the bylaw, the town meeting approved last March, that if you do A and then something in the B list, which we're doing, the stormwater and the reflective roof covering, you qualify for the fifth story. If you don't do those, you don't qualify. So it, it is, I don't want people to think that this is just something we made up. Town meeting did this and voted for this a few months ago.
I thought that they voted for four stories.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind people, it's right in the bylaw, at section 9.5.6.
We did, we did approve it through town meeting.
I guess I was confused because the, when I looked up the town bylaws even a night or two ago, the 9.5.6, it just had nothing there until Sarah and I communicated, and then it was updated. So up until yesterday or this morning, nothing was there, so how was I to know?
Yeah, I apologize for that. We, we tried to keep it up to date as possible, but it, it was part of, with land use, town meeting.
So you can't state them, because I didn't know, because it wasn't there for the public to know that.
Well, the public did know. They, they voted on it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not town meeting member.
You should, you should come on down.
I know.
Wait, Ernie, back?
It's a good time.
But my, my other question is, and I'm glad that it was brought up, about the toxicity of the land at Savagran, because, and I don't know how the firm that is dealing with the material on that land, do they work in conjunction with the EPA? How does that?
It's not governed by the EPA in this case, it's governed by the state. CPA is, I don't know, protection agency, this is DEP, Department of-
Fire and Animal Protection.
Protection. So it's-
Would they have the same information as the EPA?
I, I believe it's, certain jurisdictions are governed by different agencies. In, in large part, Massachusetts is governed by the state. In certain circumstances, the federal EPA comes in, like a Superfund site or some sort of, kind of very hazardous situation. This is a state-level region.
So maybe we can talk afterwards and compare notes?
Sure.
Okay. And then secondly, I mean, lastly, as far as, you know, it's, I, I think that I understand the need for affordability. I know that's the catchphrase for developers. They want to advertise their where, so to speak, and, you know, affordability is in neon lights, but I also think that, you know, to not have a price tag match the name of affordability, I think it's a shame to not negotiate with town, you know? So I agree with you, you know, helping the neighbors normative of blue collar town, and I just think that it's shameful that we can't negotiate on a new bill, and we're touting the word, throwing it around so loosely, affordability. No one's going to, not a lot of people in the town, if we wanted to, you know, move up, you know, move down, sell our home, move to a, a smaller place, empty nesters.
So it's-
We're still not going to be able to afford to live there, because it really isn't going to be affordable.
So it's challenging, because we, we can't prohibit builders from building-
No.
-by taking away all the profit. So there's a balancing act you have to find where-
I'm, I'm all, I'm all for profit, but it's the price gouging that I take exception to. But I, I just think that it's a shame, that negotiations can't be had to help people out. But lastly, I also want to make sure that my letter of opposition to the board is also part of the record.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Just a quick question. I believe Attorney Hearn, and I remember it coming to town meeting, that, you know, we did vote on fifth floor. Why then do they need a variance now? Or special permit or?
Sarah, could you help me out?
Yeah, so the bylaw says that if somebody, if a developer, individual project wants to pursue one of those density bonuses, it's available by special permit, which is a mechanism that allows the planning board to give extra, you know, care and concern to reviewing the details and make sure that they absolutely qualify for the requirements for that, that bonus category. So the bylaw says you can have the bonus, if you meet the requirements, and it's by special permit. So that's what got them here for the board tonight. Thank you.
Sarah, maybe it would clear up, there's a menu of things that the developer can choose from. Where would, where would one find that menu, if one was interested in seeing what, how they get a bonus?
Yeah, so that's a good question. It is in section 9.5. I believe it's 0.8 is where the bonuses are. As I'm listening, I'm wondering if it might be helpful just to take a step back and talk about what density bonuses are generally, and why they exist, because I think that's helpful information for folks.
I think at town meeting, we were, it had two different names, which was how it got confusing. If you wanted to go to the next floor, because it's not, it's cost prohibitive, they get a more, they get another floor if they give something. So it had two different names at town meeting, which we discussed ad nauseam, because it was not perfectly clear.
It's a building height bonus. It allows an extra one-story or 11 feet to the height of the building in exchange for certain, you know, improvements. A, a bonus is a commonly used tool for municipalities to try to encourage development that goes above and beyond standards, to achieve something that, that benefits the public good. Sometimes that's increased affordability. That's a really common density bonus is, well, if you give us more affordability, then we'll allow greater density, or a taller building, or what have you. We can impose a lot of requirements as a municipality. We can set regulations for, you know, buildings that look the way we want them to and function the way we want them to. But it is true that all of those things cost money, right? Meeting the new development standards and the stormwater handbook costs a lot more, right? It's not required, but if they were to do it voluntarily, it would cost a lot more. We can layer on all these different requirements, say, well, all new development has to meet, all redevelopment has to meet the new development standards. But at a certain point, what you do is you make the cost of doing business in your town so costly that there's no redevelopment ever, and you're left with properties that maybe are undesirable and in need of some investment to improve your community. So that's the rationale behind these building height bonuses, is to say, okay, well, if, if you are willing to go above and beyond and really invest in better stormwater, or add an extra 5% of deeply affordable housing, or, right, any of these things. But the third density bonus allows an extra building, an extra floor of building height in exchange for a pretty dramatic increase in open space on the property. In order to do this, we recognize there's a cost to that, and in exchange, we will allow this additional story of building height. I don't, I, I recognize that you may not agree with that concept as an individual, and certainly I respect that, but hopefully to kind of give you some background on, on why this exists, and why the planning board proposed it, and why town meeting approved it. It's a tool for us to be able to achieve some things that are above and beyond.
Did we approve it, or did they say, tell us we had to do it?
So our, the bylaw that the town wrote included the bonuses.
Mr. Sut, Sut.
I'm District 5, Town Meeting member, 7 Hamilton Circle, Golden Ash. I, I had a developer coming to one of us five, six months ago, and I'd like to ask them, what the affordability rent for a studio is going to be? Is it, is it, people, they, they use the word affordability a lot, but they don't go through a number at it. So is there a number for affordability for a studio apartment? And I think there's going to be 30, 15, 15 of them, I think.
Would someone be willing to put a number on that, as of now?
It's set by the state, it's set by the state.
50.
Is that the Boston housing?
Depends on the metro area that you're in.
We're in Boston.
So if you look at Boston, what they, they have a table that will show you based on the AMI level, the number of people in the household, what that rent cap is.
Probably something like $2,212 for a studio apartment.
It changes every year. I, I'd have to look to confirm.
And one bedroom might be $2,800.
Again, it depends on the household size.
So I'm just filling these numbers up on pure ability. The planning board, I think, I would hope, would protect the interests of one, the neighborhood, it's a narrow road. We don't need a five-story building in Norwood. We've got a few of them already, they're big, they're monstrosities. I think this, this Lennox Street area deserves a little better than a five-story building. I think the developers should be happy with a four-story building or three and a half. And I think the fact is that if they have, like Anne McAlwitz was saying, if they have a heavy rainstorm, there should be retention on, they're going to bring it back into the street, which is an overflow into self-noade. All that drain system goes into self-noade and down to the Hudson River. It just doesn't make sense. You're there to protect the neighborhood, and I would hope that this planning board would protect the neighborhood, so these people, the developers, we're the number one town in Massachusetts, New England, for apartments, 96%, somewhere in that zone. How much more can we do to the state? The state can't dictate all the things that they want on us. We've done our share. Let another town do it. This is a, this is a big, big burden for those people in that neighborhood for traffic, sound, and that's what I think.
I gotta say something.
I think that the town has to understand as a planning board, that five stories is going to be everywhere. It's going to be like the city of Boston. It's going to affect the neighborhood and the neighborhood. So I just hope you take that into consideration, and that these people that live in the street, and they don't understand the appetizing of the particulars of it, but it's a big building with a lot of area, and there's already zero apartments there now, so we're adding all those extra apartments below the four. And all the water extra is going to go back in the stream, and the storm's just-
Joe, please.
I just had a question on the drainage. Continue to now, continue to when it's built-
Continue to now, continue to when it's built, you're actually gonna have less water leaving. It's gonna be an overall improvement?
Correct.
And that seems to be a misunderstanding.
That's correct.
Okay. And by how much, I mean, is there a number or some way you can measure that?
Yep, yeah, so we do it based on a percentage. During a two-year storm, which is a more frequent storm event, we're reducing the peak rates by 48%, and we're cutting the volumes by over a half. Ten-year storm, rates go down by 1%, but the volumes go down by 32%. And then the 100, 100-year, which is the big one, the peak rates are reduced by 17%, and the volumes are reduced by 19%. So the smaller storms are where you see the greatest benefit. You know, we're cutting the volumes in half. The larger storms, it's still a reduced volume, but, you know, it's not as significant as the smaller storms.
And that's with the improved systems, that you're, the next level you're going with, if you were back to the level that you would have to do it just to redevelop it, you weren't going for the bonus, and what would be the difference between the two? Or do you have those numbers?
We don't have those numbers, but, because it would be a different design.
Yeah.
The rates and the volumes would be...
Close to existing.
Yeah, it would...
It would be greater than the upgraded system, obviously.
Yeah.
Mr. Homewood?
Just, if I may respond to Mr. Sads, this isn't something the planning board has any say in at all. This was, came down from on high, the planning, the director, and they put together groups, this came down from the state. Milton is, as far as I know, the only one that has fought it, but we, when you say the planning board should protect the neighborhood, we have nothing to say about this. There's, we have four little items that we can vote on, and that's it.
Extra floor.
And the extra floor, which again, gave them more density. I don't love it. I, you know, I'm, I'm torn. I know we, I have been incredibly vocal for 20 years about how we've got over our 50%, we take the hit, Westwood doesn't, Wellesley doesn't, but we have no say in this. This is a done deal from the state, and they didn't get any pushback down in the giant halls of downtown, or of Boston, no pushback, and that, we have, so to say, the planning board should protect the neighborhood, we have no say in it.
Mr. Pachacu, please.
Just clarify, just my thoughts on what Ms. Homewood just said, I'm not quite sure I 100% agree with her. Just on the stormwater, what's there now? There's a flat piece of tar with a building, with basically no stormwater system. Every piece of rain that hits that parking lot or building right now goes right into municipal stormwater system. So what is proposed is a tremendous improvement on that, which will reduce the number, amount, I guess, the amount of stormwater that gets into the municipal system, and that's the reason that why, the, just so we're clear, the town wrote the bylaw, which, which wrote the provision for these bonuses, not the state, the town. We did this, on the, we wrote the bylaw and went to town meeting. Town meeting passed it by a wide margin. So yes, at this point, we don't have any control, because, in my opinion, they have met the bylaw.
Correct.
Which we wrote, not the state. The state, yes, sent down the mandate on the 3A, I get that, but with the town, each town writes their own bylaw. We wrote ours, town meeting gave it a wide approval. Well, we, which, in my opinion, we don't, I can't see how we can deny the fifth floor, because the bylaw, which town meeting approved, put a provision in there for this, and unless they don't meet the bylaw, they've met the bylaw. If you deny it, on what grounds?
I'm...
I mean, I'm not saying you deny it.
Right, I'm not arguing that, yes.
But, they have met the bylaw, so, to Mr. Sads' point, protecting the neighborhood, the bylaw says that you can have a fifth floor if you do certain things. In my opinion, this applicant has done those certain things, so they've met the bylaw. So, the time, all the discussions we had in the two years of meetings on the 3A, was when all of this was discussed and kicked around, and burden heights, things like that were all discussed, the bylaw was written, went to town meeting, and was passed. So if an applicant meets the bylaw, I, I...
I agree, Mr. Pachacu.
Where we're at. It wasn't the state, the town wrote the bylaw. That, 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 the state told us to write one, but we wrote it and passed it.
Joe, please.
Just to get some perspective, on actually how far back the building is from the street, there is some parking before that, and then you add the 40 feet?
That's correct.
So altogether, it's more like closer to 60, maybe?
Closer to 60 feet, that's correct.
Right.
And that little parking lot we're talking about is not your property, correct? They belong to the apartments across the street?
That's correct.
That parking lot is about 25 to 26 feet deep, according to the plans, and then we go back from that.
Thank you.
Over 60 feet.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm John Delly. I live down on 69 North Street. The stormwater, has that plan been approved on the site plan, as far as how you're gonna drain that water?
So that's part...
Is it a set tank? Is it going into the ground? Is it retention basin?
So that's part of this...
Is it lined?
I'm sorry.
No, disagreeing, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, sir.
The infiltration basin, their underground chambers, they are not lined, they're meant to be infiltrated into the ground.
Through the ground?
Yep.
Okay, so, my next question would be, the test board for the dirty dirt, how deep of, what's the depth on that, the dirty dirt?
Sure, so through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
The, we did test this in the vicinity of where we wanted to infiltrate stormwater. Those areas are not contaminated. What we look for is the soil types and the water table elevation, and we've met the state and local requirements for setting the elevations of these systems, two feet above that seasonal high-water table. And we've performed the number of testing pit locations that are required for deciding the system, so...
Any, any other questions? Yes, please.
On that, on that, is, you know, that whole area is flood-prone, and it's all, it's not rainwater coming off the street, it's basin underground water. So if we're gonna be pushing that water from uphill downstream to those lower houses, guess what? There's gonna be real big issues. So, I, I, that's something you have to really look at, as far as, you know, the water. It's, it's a bit of problem up there, it is, and it's, you know, they say down there it floods back. That's not the problem. So, it's just like putting out retention basin down in Hennessy Field, you can't put it on rock, and you're not gonna put 9 million gallons on top of it. So if that fails up there, there's gonna be a lot of flooding downstream, and one of those houses is mine. And it's serious stuff. And then, the other thing is, is the safety issue. That, that neighborhood is flooded with traffic right now. You have the train station, you're gonna have this new building, you've got the hospital, the fire station, cars coming up there. I live on the con, you know how many cars have come through my front lawn, going through the stop signs, that bridge down there, there's a lot of stuff that really, you need to, that whole neighborhood needs to be redel, developed, in order for this to work. I'm not saying you can't put a building in there, but, you know, why don't we start small? I know probably in the next 10 years, I won't be around to see it, but that whole strip is probably gonna be developed. So you go four stories, the next building you go five. Why do we always, you're trying to put a tuner and a sardine can up there?
Thank you.
It's not right, I mean, for once, help the community, help the neighbors, and there's a lot of elderly down there that have been there for life. I've been there all my life, there's young kids, there's so much traffic going in and out of there. The train station early morning, trucks, it's, I get it, I get it, well, you know, the bylaws and everything, but let them start small. I mean, why do we always gotta do things bigger in this town? And we don't know what's gonna happen up there when they put a shovel in the ground, who knows what they're gonna come up with?
Thank you.
That whole, that whole lot up there is dirty. I grew up there, I know what it is, you know, you can't fluff...
Thank you. I'm gonna take someone from online, because...
Mary Paz?
Sorry?
Mary Paz?
Mary Paz, are you there? I see your hand is raised.
Hey, sir. Yep, I'm here, thank you. I'm taking this, and I'll be quick, because it's getting late for you guys, but I'm Mary Paz, I live at 11 Heaton Avenue in South Norwood, so, though I don't live up there, I do take Lennox Street, and I am concerned that, that the people there, living there will have issues, as the gentleman before me said, with traffic. So, I'm asking first, is there gonna be some kind of traffic study to determine at some point if there'll be a traffic light there? My second point is on the water abatement. I hope that the gentlemen who are developing have seen the videos about the Norwood Hospital flooding, and how serious that was, and I don't believe that the once every 10 years, once every 100 years is a rule anymore, I think we're gonna be having more of those storms. So, I'm not impressed with their figures, but, you know, I'm not a scientist, so I hope, or engineers, I hope there have been other engineer, engineers double-checking their work. And I don't have a problem with the fifth floor, because I, I know, I grew up here in Norwood, but I do believe that, you know, things are changing, we've got a lot more people, we need to house them. But I do say that if there is gonna be a fifth floor, and I could be wrong, but my understanding of the state's Chapter 40B is that the local zoning board has the authority to ask a developer to provide 20 to 25% of affordable housing, or, I think it was five, or it, it was another one, about the 5% of, maybe 50% of, I mean, a little amount for the really, you know, needy people, you know, 50% or less of the formula. So, I would like, you know, a comment about that, because I do think that our, our local zoning board, I love you guys, you're great, and I love Sarah, she's great, I do think that it is not really true that we need to depend on, that we, that we have this mindset that the developer's not gonna come to Norwood, that the developers are having trouble getting permits in other towns, and if we make ourselves, show developers that we are a thriving town with, with people who will move into their places, I think it's up to us. I don't think we can hide behind that, oh, they're not gonna come here. And also, just a quick point, I know that when I have the, you know, the office in the front, but what about the units in the back, we're gonna be right by the, you know, the trains going by, so, just wanted to point that out, it seems like, you know, you wanna reverse that. Okay, so, okay, anybody's got a comment, I would love it, but thank you, folks, for working on this.
Thank you. Sarah, could you help me a little bit with the ZBA comment?
Just backing up on the question about traffic and review of engineering plans. The town engineer has reviewed this plan and is satisfied with it. Police and fire departments have reviewed the proposal, and have not asked for a traffic study. DPW also, you know, would have the authority to ask for that, that traffic study, and they have not. To your question about 40B developments, it's a good question. The mechanism by which affordable housing developments come before, in Chapter 40B, what we call Chapter 40B, is a comprehensive permit. It's a different mechanism for development than what we're dealing with here. This is a by right development according to our zoning bylaw. It's not going through that comprehensive permit process, which, Mary Paz is correct, gives the ZBA the authority to kind of negotiate a little bit with, with the developer on the proposal. This is, you know, it's coming up to planning board for site plan review on our zoning bylaw, and as long as it meets the requirements, you know, there's less negotiating capacity. It's just not the same as the 40B.
Thank you. Mr. Shin?
I think she had a question on the affordability, but I, I think the answer is that it's there. She was asking about the habit there, and we do, it's 70%.
Are there any other people online with questions? Anyone's hand raised right now? No, okay. Any other comments or questions from the public?
I just have one thing about the drainage. I live directly across the street from the train station, and we call it Lake Lennox. It fills the block much too much. I don't know, I don't know much about drainage, obviously, I'm an engineer, but it concerns me, because we get flooded all the time, and it's never been fixed, it was never addressed.
Could I just grab your...
Teresa Dooley, 246 Lennox Street.
Thank you. This, this would be an improvement on drainage, the current drainage now?
Right, maybe. Maybe.
Through you, Mr. Chair, is the, is the area you're talking about, you say it was across the street from, from the MBCA station? So, based on our...
You know where I'm talking about.
So based on our surveys, that area is actually higher than our site. Lennox Street slopes down towards the south, so, any stormwater or runoff from our property existing, we'll propose, really has no impact on that area.
So, so you're saying you are uphill, or they are, they are up...
Down from that area.
Right, okay. Yes, Mr. Sads?
Just a question, I'm kind of confused and puzzled, when somebody does the development like up on Dempsey's property, I don't think they can bring water from that development out to the street, is that correct?
That's not correct.
It's not, no. It's...
Yes.
Oh, it's not correct.
Water cannot leave the property at a higher rate than currently exists. So, all these developments, and these, and the engineer definitely can attest to this, all these recharge chambers and things that they put in the ground that are made to water, you know, through gravel, and you have all kinds of different soil things you gotta put in, I understand that. So, a project, the water cannot leave at a higher rate, this is the short answer, than it currently does. Most of these developments improve that, so water will leave a development at a slower rate than currently does. That's the reason for all these discharges and capturing in the water and all of that, but it still eventually can leave the site, but not at a higher rate than it is now. Can't make it worse. Am I...
That's correct.
Am I right on that? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I think you mentioned, that's what I heard, that if there's a heavy storm, it's gonna overflow and go back into the Norwood's drain system. Is that correct?
It will, that's correct, but not at a higher rate than would exist today.
No, but we're giving up an extra floor for that rate to go back into the system.
So, I think...
We're trying to...
I think he said it would be discharged.
And versus giving up an extra floor, that reason...
If, if I, if I'm thinking of this correctly, we're basically slowing down the water, so that the piping downstream is not overwhelmed in an instant. We're holding it as long as possible and as much as possible until needs to overflow, to hold back that water, so it's not, not everything's inundated at the same time.
Okay, doesn't make sense to me, but okay.
That's, it's...
Was it 100% of the water on that site being discharged in the town system right now?
That's correct.
And what you're proposing is to infiltration system, which lets a lot of it seep into the ground, and the remainder of it stays in these underground tanks, and then leaks out slowly. So it ultimately is an improvement upon the discharge system, and as Rob said, it controls it, as opposed to now, if there's a big storm, it all just runs into the town system.
Any rainstorm.
Yeah, any rainstorm.
But I'm just saying that we're giving up an extra floor for that, a little bit of maybe, maybe not.
Sure.
Sure.
One more, Sarah, thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, I am gonna approach the safety officer and do a walk through with them, for neighbors' concerns, for the record.
Okay, very good. Oh, sir, yes, please go ahead, name and address.
Yeah, James Rother, 200 Emore Lane. Just a point, the discharge into the town service system will only happen in that 100, once 100 per year storm.
Extreme.
Extremely extreme.
Yep.
And if it's less severe than the once in 100 years, then we're just like taking away from the town's drainage system.
I think it's a little more complicated than that.
Yeah, that's not, so to you, Mr. Chairman, that's not entirely correct. And I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me to tell you at what, you know, at what duration storm event it starts to leave and enter the municipal system. All I can tell you is that those percentages I had mentioned before, that we're cutting the volumes and the peaks roughly in half from what exists today.
Yeah, but there is a, a storm that like, at a certain, below a certain level of severity, we're taking away from the load on the town.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's beyond that, it's just gravy, I guess.
The large flood storms, I mean, every place in town, you know, it's, the municipal system captures most all of it, when you have these, you know, huge flash floods.
If there's no more, any other comments from the public? If there's any last comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you can take a vote on...
What is, what is the wish of the board at this point?
I think we should vote on the special permit first, because that will have direct impact on the site plan review.
Okay, for the extra, for the extra floor. All right. Any discussion, final discussion on the extra floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve, and the basis on that is our own town bylaw that was approved by town meeting, which allows for this. And to my satisfaction, the applicant has met the bylaw.
Exceeded?
Exceeded the bylaw. Or has met the bylaw for the, I should say exceeded, but has met the bylaw for the additional floor. We're not giving any waivers on that, that they've met the bylaw.
They've met the bylaw.
They've met the bylaw, and we're, we're not giving any waivers, nothing, no conditions. So, I would make the motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion, a motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion on the fifth floor bonus special permit?
Good.
Mr. Shin.
Yeah, I just wanna throw this out there, see if anyone has any, anything to say on it. I know that we were comparing this building to the apartments across the street. And how tall are they, they, is that a four-story? That's right in the neighborhood?
Three.
Three?
Three stories, it's three stories.
It's a three-story, okay. And, but it's right on the street. And this one is 60 feet back from, from the street. It makes a difference, you know, as, as to how you perceive it, because it's not right up front. And it reminds me of how we, looking at these things in, in some of these other bylaws where we, if we had a building of a certain height when we were downtown, that we...
Step back.
Step back, it was different tiers, and as you move back, it could get taller, but not right on the street. And I think the same concept kinda goes here, but it's being morphed enough because it's actually 60 feet away. So, that's the reason why I would have a problem with it. And I don't know if anyone else had anything to say on that.
Any other comments on this, on this vote? So, I have a, a motion on the floor to approve, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, five oh.
Do we... Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve site plan review with the four waivers. The 18 and a half to 18-foot lane, the added nine parking spaces, the six spots on the front, I'll call it the front of the building for better term, and the 28 to 24-foot travel lane. And the one condition that we maintain the 20 percent affordable.
Okay, Sarah.
I just, Mr. Attorney Hearn, did I catch them all?
Well, I, I just wanna be sure, you're, we're talking about the ones we talked about earlier that you...
Correct, yes.
Took a vote on.
Correct.
I'm just putting it into the whole site approval and site plan review.
The 18, 18-foot parking stalls, the 169 parking spaces, the six parking spaces within the setback, and the 24-foot drive aisle instead of 28 feet. Those are the four that we have.
Correct. Sarah, do we have any conditions that were agreed upon or worked through with the town departments?
Yeah, so in the memo that I distributed to the board from my office on August 16th, you'll see a list of 14 standard conditions. Most of them are your familiar standard conditions about housekeeping on the site, and when the, the site plan critical lapses, if they don't use it, and all the standard stuff, noise. There are a couple of ones that are unique to this that I recommended. The first conditions, two, three, four, and five, are all about the affordability, making sure that there's a requirement that they comply with those standards above and beyond what's, you know, in the bylaw. That was something that HLC had issued guidance on. It helps them to process the local action unit application if it's in the decision. So, I read around to those. There's also item eight, condition eight, which is prior to issuance of building permit, the applicant shall respond to all comments on the August 16th memorandum from Mark Ryan to the satisfaction of the engineering department, and it shall be confirmed in writing. There's since been another memo from Mark confirming that some of them were addressed. So, I recommend including, including that one as well.
I'll add that to the... Attorney Hearn, are you, are you on board with this? We have, there's a memorandum from August 16th from Mark Ryan.
We're, we're, we're okay with Mr. Ryan's comments except for the easement matter. He, he asked for an easement along the northerly portion of the property, we cannot agree to that. It throws off all the stormwater construction, all, all the stormwater facilities. We agree to everything else, or we've answered everything else, I think, to his satisfaction. As late as end of the week, we were trading, Friday afternoon, trading emails back and forth. But the easement is the one issue that we cannot agree to. And I'm not sure that it's really appropriate in this case. If, if we're doing a stormwater, we can't do the easement. And I'm not, I can't explain the technical aspect, I did, I turned to one of the engineers if you need.
Is that something that can be shaken out?
I will say the easement is a request, but it's not a requirement of the bylaw here. The, the stormwater is.
Joe, do you have any comments on that?
Is there anyone that can explain the easement, the purpose for it? Whether it be more tactical, I don't know.
I think he was looking for an easement for future purposes relating to town drainage. I, I think that's all it said, I don't have it in front of me.
That's correct. So, we had a, a meeting early on, and my understanding from that meeting was that he was trying to connect or allow for the future connection from somewhere on the west side of our property, on the other side of the tracks, to connect to somewhere on the east side of our property. And he was looking to provide that connection through a 20-foot easement on our property. But I don't know exactly what he was connecting to, or...
All the...
Oh, well, yeah, so the reason we can't provide the easement is because that's where all the stormwater management is located. Based on the test bits that we've done on the site, that northeast corner, where he's looking to have that easement, is where the water table allows us to install these chambers, only place, yeah, is the only place.
But may, may I ask? Mark doesn't ask willy-nilly, because he's got an easement, doesn't mean you can't establish your water filtration there, does it?
It does.
It does, so...
Means we can't build it.
These, my understanding is the easement would allow him to install a drain line through that area. And if our underground chambers and utilities are in that location, there wouldn't be any room for, you know, installing a drain line at any future date.
Second, could I ask Sarah a question?
Please, Mr. Shin.
Just if you know of any, if he has any other options, or if you've discussed where he might put one of the...
So, I have not discussed this particular issue yet, so I can't answer that question. I will say that there's precedent before for some of the requests made by the, the engineering department that are, you know, nice-to-haves but not must-haves. I can't speak to whether or not this one falls in that category, but again, this is not a requirement that's listed in the bylaw.
Next door to this property, Mr. Chairman, there's a big parking lot, probably nothing under it.
You just gotta go through the T, right?
If you'd like to adjust that, that condition.
Number eight. Does anyone have any thoughts on...
When I ask.
Anyone have any thoughts on amending number eight?
I don't know. I'd like to know why you want it.
I wish I'd, I wish I'd talked to Mr. Ryan prior.
Mr. Chairman, sometimes people do like to request things like this, to sort of, sometimes to stockpile them. They might need them down the road. And I think as Ms. Dixon said, this is a request, not a requirement. And it's sometimes, some of these requests sometimes fall into the, it'd be nice to have this category. But in this case, we've had all this discussion tonight about stormwater compliance with the stormwater handbook and the local regulations, just throw all that out the window. And it's, you know, we've, we've made all our plans based upon the idea that that's the area, the only area where we can put those things. So, those things benefit the town as well as an easement that we don't know much about, perhaps even more than an easement, might benefit the town. There may be other places to get them, but that would take a big chunk of our property and take it out of service, take it out of use, and have a really detrimental effect on the whole project. And the town loses the benefit of the stormwater improvements we're proposing to make.
Well, you wanna hold off until you, you get confirmation from Mark? Prior to issuing a building permit, the applicant shall respond to all comments on August 16th memorandum. Do we have that in our package, ma'am? We don't.
We, we've responded to everything except for that one.
Yeah.
We did not answer it one way or another, but we're answering it now that we can't do it.
Does anyone, anyone have any sway? I, I hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mark.
I would...
I hate to put you on the spot.
As it was, I'm sure Mark would love to have it. But it's not, it's not a requirement, it's, it was non-existent before. And I think, you know, it's, he's asking for it, he would like it, but he, the property owner doesn't have to be allowed. And, and, you know, it would be, you know, I'm sure Mark would like a lot of easements all over the place. And, but he has to get, you know, permission, and we'll see, eminent domain it, which isn't gonna happen, so... I would, I would go with the, I'm gonna stay with my, my motion.
Any other comments on the motion to include the, the four that were listed and the entire...
My comment is to include eight except for the nice-to-have, the easement. And I had plenty of discussions, and also in the last second, that kinda came in.
Well, it's better. Can I say something?
Sue.
Sure, this one.
I just do wanna go on record that we, we have a right as a board to listen to our fire department, our engineering department, I think I brought this up on FALZAV, that we also have the right to say we agree or disagree, that's why we're a five-member board. I'm just going to remind everybody that we can do it or we cannot do it. I'll just bring it back up. Next time I get told I'm not an engineer or a fireman.
So, what is the motion?
So, I have a motion for, to approve for the...
Site plan review.
Site plan review, the four discussed waivers that you're looking for.
Yep.
The, the list of conditions that were previously discussed with the...
Minus with the other departments, number eight.
Minus number eights, Mark, Mark Ryan's satisfaction only pertaining to the easement.
So, we are at, at the working draft of conditions one through 14, except that as to number eight, where it says to the satisfaction of the engineering department, add except for the request for an easement.
Correct.
Okay. That, that makes sense to us, thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Any other business, Chairman? I believe that's it.
All right, I have a motion for a German.
Every time I bring up that...
Oh. Apologize, one second.
September 9th is your next one.
September 9th?
September 9th.
That's fascinating. Is that two weeks ago? Well, evades early this year, isn't it? Just FYI, October 10th, I'm ordering surgery, so I might miss a meeting or two. I tried Zoom, I was up in Maine, I'm on the phone, I'm yelling on the phone, I can hear you, and, and, well, I guess you lost 30. No, I'm here, and I'm hitting, I'm hitting mute, unmute, mute, I'm here.
Can I take one second? When I asked before about the block, I forgot how old I was and how long I looked to know if the block was the buildings across the street, and I wonder if you were looking at me so...
Yeah, I have no idea what you're talking about, Jean, no idea.
I know what you were talking about.
I thought that thing was forced, or something.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, good night.